This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, stand and state of pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the great law, that the liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. County Board Supervisors meeting, Metro County Courthouse in Osage. Meeting is available by vote to meet also, which an agenda in front of us. Any corrections needed, otherwise, so accept the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Article is made the motion, is there a second? I'll second it. Go ahead. Mayor seconded. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
Motion carries. Proof minutes of the October 24th meeting. Again, any corrections needed, those accept the motion to approve it. Make motion for 24th meeting. Anybody else has made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Frank, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done?
Roelton Tim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. Motion carries. County Attorney general discussion.
I have a lot for you today. I'm gonna be gone Thursday and Friday. It's just a weekend family trip with my wife and my mom.
Mr.?
So anyway, nothing. But I, as always, you know, will be available. Most people have my cell phone number, my email, and other stuff, so if you need to get ahold of me. That's about it, as far as I want to update on. Had some depositions yesterday in the sex abuse case, so at some point, probably be seeing costs come through. So, public defender case, public defender's defending that case, and so usually it seems like those, when you're dealing with indigent defendants, it seems like all their deposition costs come to the state or to the county, right? I don't necessarily always need copies of the depositions and stuff. I mean, I usually get them, but in this, you know, this case will be probably the court's first time and the cost and everything else. I don't know how much it'll be. I mean, it was probably from when I started at nine o'clock, probably got done about four, but not all that time's deposition time, but it'll be a few dollars probably, you know. So anyway, got money in the budget, that's no problem. I just guess I try to keep people up to date, you know. I mean, right? I mean, if you see a deposition come through, you want to make sure it's like, okay, we're not doing this for one of your Friday cases, right? So I'll just tell you ahead of time that you'll, you know, see. I don't know when, probably a couple of weeks or something.
Just curious, what part of the budget does that come out of?
Well, we've got county attorney budget, and then I think we've got a specific line item for depositions, right, Rachel?
Right.
Okay. Just wondered.
Yeah. So, and I don't think before we've ever used it all. This year might be a little different because we had the burger cakes up here. But I still, I mean, I don't, I guess I have luck for a few weeks or so, but I think we're still pretty good.
Any questions for the attorney? Okay.
All right. Sheriff update. And so adding to what Aaron just said, there's two additional cases, which is a way that he's probably not aware, it'll take some of that money from you.
So do I hear.
Yeah. So those cases create overtime for my guys, so you're gonna start seeing that show up too. There was a lot of state travel into Minnesota on one of those cases from last week. So when the overtime comes, it's two sex abuse cases that are coming, and then there was three search warrants that we did yesterday, two in the county, one in the city, that five of the seven guys are involved in, so there'll be some overtime that you'll see on that also. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
If you have questions for me, and you quite happy to answer. Okay. Thank you.
Department head discussion. Any department head discussion?
I just have one thing, just on the childcare update. The pledges are due by noon today, and then my application is due by three o'clock today, so we're like the match, the dollar for dollar match. I need all those pledges in by noon today, and then our grant total right now, as of right now, is $286,968. And then it could be as high as $324,767, depending on if the tip is able to match more than $10,000 for the hospital. So, and then you would in turn get, you know, $286 or $324 from the state. So that's exciting.
So it wasn't limited to that 200, that was just your goal?
That was our goal. That was our goal, and these are past our goal. That was just, you know, by taking some of the numbers that I put together after a survey that we did, it was, that's, you know, taking $2 per hour per employee. That's the number that we kind of came up with, so.
So if you get more money, is there gonna be more dollars per hour?
Possibly. We gotta look at, I mean, I think we need to, the coolest will have to look at all that once we kind of get all our numbers finalized.
Because you got a certain time, you gotta use that $286 then, right?
Um, October of 24.
Okay, so you got a year to.
Yep.
Use that portion of it up, right?
Yep.
And has to go for wages, correct?
Yep.
That'd be nice.
Good job, Amika.
Yep.
And then one other quick thing, we partnered with the OCH High School to do a job fair, so we have a job fair scheduled for December 6, and then the backup date is December 30 or December 13. That'll be at the CRC from eight to four. It's mostly for the high school kids, I think they're gonna possibly include the junior high, but then it'll also be open to the public during select times as well, if not the whole time. That's what I have.
Amanda?
I've got a couple of things. Sorry, it's gonna be kind of hard to get on. To start off, let me give you guys a little bit of advices. Yesterday, I was out doing a side evaluation, and I was coming around the bridge, and I get a deer down the vehicle. It's fine, but there are cracked headlights and stuff that are probably gonna have to get replaced. I don't know about the deer, but I'm sure it's probably not as good as the vehicle was.
Right, okay.
I'm okay, yes. It was just a little shaken up at the moment, but I wanted to let you guys know about that. And then I wanted to ask, just because I'd rather ask first than just do it and then have to apologize later. I would like to improve the appearance of my office a little bit, or do plan on painting, but I was wondering if you guys would be okay with me hanging two 4x8 shoes paneling on one wall in my office?
You can do the work.
I'm gonna do, yeah, I'm gonna do the work. I'll do the hanging and the cutting of the wall, I have the tools to do that. So it would be like a two day project in my office in the winter when I'm not super, super busy. It's just more so the paneling would go on the wall, and I don't, I don't want to do something and then have to hang all that up with that. So, just want to ask first.
Okay, we'll go on before.
Sure, you want to give it Dave, and he could help.
Yeah, Dave maybe could help too, and if Dave's not available, I thought about maybe asking Darren upstairs too. I don't know if he would be available, but trying to get some help to, yeah, maybe make it go a little smoother and faster, but it would just be one wall.
We'll paint the other ones.
And then, yeah, I would paint, paint the rest of the walls, so. I just, I want to protect, so the wall behind my office, I have my chair in there, and I don't purposefully mean to do it, but I have very little space, and my chair keeps hitting the wall. And one day, I know I'm gonna probably bust a hole in the wall, so if I put some paneling up, at least that's a little bit of a protective, so, yeah. If you guys are okay with that.
We're okay with that, true. Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Good deal. And then one last question. A couple months ago, we had the zoning commission meeting, and I haven't received a packet yet. Like, is there any way that?
Oh, from the?
Oh, yeah. What would they hand out? You know, the, the commission with us trying to plan the meetings, if it's okay, if you can double check in on that to see if they can get us those packets, because, yeah, we haven't received them yet.
Just regular packet that they're?
Well, the ones that they're handing out, so, because the commission wants the packets to be able to be like 400% fully informed of what they're giving the public, because none of them have received it. And at the meeting, I think Mike said that he was gonna ask.
Yeah.
If that's okay.
Yeah, did, did they ever get ahold of all your members too?
No.
I mean, they were gonna, I gave them names and numbers, I said, reach out to these people, and, uh.
None of them told me that they've been contacted, so. Just with the, I mean, in the state, like in the stages of going through and into the meeting, but I just, I want them to be as fully informed about the project as possible. And I would just like one for my office, not because I want to scope everything out just for record of what they were gonna do.
The setbacks and whatever they, they just.
Right.
Are they still going through with the project? I haven't talked to anybody.
I don't know, I got a packet I can give you.
You got a packet?
If you can bring it in, I'll make copies of it even, and then I'll send it out to them, that would be awesome.
But maybe it's not the latest and the greatest, so maybe we should, uh, we'll see if I get a couple.
But I wouldn't think that would change, you know, I mean, what they're giving to the first person, they're gonna give to the last person. What you would think, yeah, I mean, I.
Never know.
I hope so.
I think that.
If you can, yeah, if you can get that too, you know, it'd be great, and I'll make copies of them, and I can send it out to them.
When you, when you send it to Amanda, I guess I'd like that too, you could, she has a packet.
Yeah, I'll get you a copy.
I think her, yeah, I want somewhere too.
Okay. Yeah, if one of you possibly do that, that would be much appreciated, just so that way we can review, and they can get all, all of the information.
I haven't heard anything from the public lately, if there's still, I know some people that they've talked to, and I know some people that have signed off, but I don't know.
Hanging load till after harvest, probably.
Maybe, I suppose it's busy. I could hold people up there.
I know I've seen them locked on to our meetings. Last couple times, but they're not on today.
Okay.
That's all, thanks.
County engineer update.
Morning.
Morning.
Couple things, a lot of the bridge, one of five, the only concrete left to pour is the railing, the bridge approaches, they haven't completely backfilled yet, I think they have much backfilling, they just got done pouring some of the wing wall stuff. So, little bit of work to go yet, hopefully the weather straightens out a little bit for them so they can continue to get some concrete pours in before, than to do too much protection for cold weather. So that was still progressing, we're still airing out some, some issues with that. One thing, we, I don't know if I'd mentioned this a while back, we've been working with the railroad in Carpenter, they're gonna be doing some, they, they gave me a call a few weeks back, and they were getting tired of all the phone calls for the rough crossing, and, uh, so their intent is to maybe replace some of the wooden ties in between the tracks, because a lot of them are deteriorated. They're not gonna do a full blown project, they're just trying to get by until a grant comes through back. I think it's probably 2027 is when they can get on that DOT grant for upgrades. But in the meantime, I talked to the railroad maintenance crews, or the maintenance, the guy in charge of maintenance locally, and he's gonna allow us to grind down some of the asphalt, because the tracks have settled and are, are retired, and so we brought in, we talked to Floyd County, they've got a skid loader with a little, I think it's a two head mill on it, and we've been trying to schedule it, so the railroad's allowing us to go in, they're gonna be present, but we're not paying for their flagger and all the insurance and stuff, they're gonna let us mill down. So today, we're gonna be out in Carpenter trying to mill down some of the asphalt pumps that are there, and then later on, they'll come back and kind of replace some things. So hopefully try to make that a little smoother on those crossings, because it's rough. And before it was, you know, if we wanted to do it, we have to buy railroad insurance, pay for flaggers, we kind of waited long enough to where they're just disgruntled enough that they don't want to do it, they want to get it done and get the people out of their hair, so we'll be up there today to get that smoothed out a little bit. I'm not gonna say it's gonna be perfect, but we might have to reimburse Floyd County than bringing a guy or two up here to help us, because it's their machine, so, which I'm fine with, it's, we don't have the machine to do it, and they've got the time, so just you might be, be seeing some of that. And then, um, also, just as a reminder, I think Friday by three is the, the deadline for turning any bids in for the old engineers escape, and then we've got a pickup for sale, and we've got like, I think, a plow on the wing, or, oh, we're at the shop that we're trying to get rid of, we advertised in the paper, so we've done our diligence in advertising for it, but just as a reminder anyway, that that's there, and then can we put that on the agenda for Tuesday, during my session to open those bids?
Wednesday.
I didn't know that was changed.
Yeah, you were here. We can move it to Wednesday.
Well, I advertised that it was gonna be open here on Tuesday. Now the bid, that shouldn't really matter, because the bids are all gonna be due on Friday, regardless of whether it's Worth County or Mitchell County, but now I gotta figure out how to be in two places at once. I didn't know you guys changed the.
Should be moved until Wednesday.
Okay.
I'll be out, I can't wait.
We could probably still do it.
So we're running back on Monday?
I can still try to, I can do that meeting over there and then come over here for the meeting, it just might be later in the, in the meeting that I can get here, but just because I want to have the physical bids, you know.
What time is 3:00?
Same as ours, 8:30. So, but I'm, I'm right away at 8:30 there, I'll open, because we're selling three trucks over there, I'll open that stuff up, get that done, and I can pack up, and this way it's 45 minute drive, so.
Can they, can they adjust their agenda so that right after approval of the agenda, go right to you to do that?
I always am.
Okay.
I'm, I'm right away.
Okay.
And I take, yeah, so, I can make that, I think I can make that, work is just gonna be later.
We'll just put you at the end.
Put me at the very end, and then, and I don't think, whether it's Monday or Tuesday, that matters, because it's not like the bids are due right before the meeting, so. And people will get notified if they're award, you know, if they made it, so. And then, we've been, we've been eyeballing some equipment, just so happens, our longarm brush cutter granited itself last week, and we've been kind of eyeballing, looking at used, used arm mowers in the area. We found a 2014 John Deere tractor with a, it's a, not a diamond, but a Tiger brush cutter mower with an 18 foot reach. Tractor's got, I think it's got 9,000 hours on it, it's pre-deaf. One of the bigger issues is that they, I know that Ben was going to look at the tractor and the mower, when they went to look at it, tractor runs pretty decent, it's, it's a good tractor. The mower, they couldn't get turned on. I think there's an electrical problem, and that whole system is just a module from the tractor, you know, it's, it's a separate module from the tractor, so it's not a tractor problem, it's a, a problem with the brush cutter system, and it might be an electrical, it's electrical or hydraulics. We think that we could probably find the solution to making that mower run. The issue that I have, it, it's a toss up, we can probably get the tractor set up. Now, a brand new arm mower tractor setup's gonna be pushing about $180,000 to $190,000, because tractors aren't cheap anymore, and the mower system itself is around $75,000 just for the arm mower, which we use in the fall to kind of cut down fence lines and get to where we can't reach. So, the one we have is kind of done, it's gonna cost us about $8,000 to fix the one we have, which it's a vintage addition. We can't get parts for it anymore, even to modify it to what it was, it's the moment of spray, the internal spray system, you can't get that system anymore. So, I guess what I'm asking is kind of your opinion. I'm of the opinion that it might not be a bad investment for a third of the cost of the new one, to bring this, to purchase this, bring it in. I think the seller thought he might even, if we were serious about it, he might take it in to get it so that the mower would turn on, but at any rate, I don't know if it's gonna cost $5,000, less than $5,000, more than $5,000 to get it running, but, well, we only use it in the fall, it's not a, it's not a high hour machine for us to use, so I'm thinking that maybe it's a good possibility, it's a pre-deaf tractor, the tractor seems to, from what I understand, it runs really good. The only, the only issue that we don't know is the, the mower won't engage, and we think that might be a electrical problem, or that's what we think. For the third of the cost, I think we can fix it rather cheaply and get it running, I guess. I'm of the opinion, maybe it's worth a shot to spend, you know, $62,000 for this whole setup versus $180,000 for new. You get a new machine, we're never gonna run the warranty through it, because we don't use it often enough, but we get an older model that replaces the older one we have, it's an upgrade from what we have, the actual mower folds behind the cap, so it's not off to the side, got better balance, front wheel assist, we're getting more, but I guess I kind of want to put the feelers out and what you guys' opinion is on purchasing something to use that we're not quite sure what, what the issue is. But I think, I think we can figure it out, but we just, you know, worst case scenario is the tractor, let's just make the assumption the tractor's completely shot, or not the tractor, but the mower, it doesn't engage well, we still got a $62,000 tractor, new tractor's around $150,000, $160,000. We got a cheap tractor we could use.
How many horses is it?
Um, I can't remember what he said the model was, it's a little bit bigger than our 7130s right now.
What's a John Deere?
It's a John Deere, so I don't remember what model he said it was, but it's a little bit bigger than the ones we have. Not.
Like, I don't know, 130, 130 horse?
Yeah, they're 100, I think the 130 is, is the, is the PTO horse or whatever, and then, they're actually.
150 horse.
What's that?
This might be 150.
Yeah, I can't remember, I don't remember what he said the, the size was, but he said it's a little bit bigger than the ones we have. Even if that machine doesn't work out, I guess we still have a spare tractor to put another mower on, I guess, I guess, I'm trying to put feelers out, it's, it's a lot of money, but yet it's not a lot of money compared to buying a new one that will never burn the warranty out of before, it's auto warranty.
The tractor itself might be worth.
I.
And it marked or what?
Yeah.
We demoed one with the mower on the back once.
We bet that the three point, I think it was, and it wasn't stable at all.
And it, the operator didn't like it, because you're always looking over your shoulder, looking backward, going on the side, you're looking out the window.
Yep.
And then one day, they brought it back, where the window shattered on the door on the tractor, because something went through, and it, instead of going to the side, it's behind you, so we lost a window. We had my window.
But the, this, this one, it actually folds out to the side, so you're working out the side, but when you're done with it, it folds behind you, so it's compacted more, you get down in the ditches better, so it's a little different. That 3.1 was kind of a nice, quick attachment, but it just wasn't beneficial for us to have to look back on when we were moving, so. Guess I'm trying to put some feelers out and what your opinion is. What do you got? Oh.
Yes, I'm just saying, if you think you can fix it, and you, you're the one that's looking at the tractor, the tractor looks decent for you, so, there's probably worth having, but.
It's a 6125, so.
6125?
We got a full roll cage on it.
You know somebody that you could, or something.
I think I've had this picture before, I just, she'd sent it to me, so, yeah.
I guess, I think the tractor is probably.
I think the tractor itself is worth that.
But what would be the, let's say the brush cutter, it's gonna run into big dollars to fix, and you, you gotta have a brush cutter, because the other one's detonated. Where are we at with the brush cutter for price?
Oh, a brand new one's like $75,000. I think you're still into a, a brush cutter with an old, older tractor for less than a brand new one, but.
Yeah.
I honestly think that this model is new enough yet, you can still get parts for it, but I think it's an electrical, whether it's the control unit or whatever it is, we kind of think that, that the systems are, there's something electrical that needs to be, a bug we've, we found, but I think it came from Missouri originally, so, but.
Should be fixable, I would think, too.
You said the owner might, what ended up doing it?
The, the one, the guy that's selling it, he's kind of, well, the history was, he was an old car salesman, and then COVID hit, and he did something else, and was gonna get back, and he started buying and selling tractors, and then he thought this tractor would be something he could move really quick, but he found out it's a limited, there's a limited customer base for a, a, a longarm tractor mower, so just finding out that it's not easy to move, so.
This one has more angles you can do with the mower?
Yep, it's got, yep, it's got, you know, you can, it swings more than the other one does, and it's got an 18 foot reach, I don't know if that gets us any more than what we have, but I think it's a, I'm of the opinion, right now, I think it's probably a, a good deal, whether the mower works or not, we could take the mower off of it, buy another side mower, put it on that tractor, use it on rail, I mean, there's options with another tractor, and I guess pre-deaf tractors are hard to find, it's, it's just before tier four, so it still has some of the emissions on it, but it's not a deaf tractor, and with something that's sitting in the shed all winter long, we don't want to, you know, with the deaf system and stuff, I just, we don't, we use it a lot in the fall and spring, but, just kind of putting feelers out there, I think it might be something we can actually manage to buy and then fix for a reasonable amount of money. We're gonna have definitely a lot less money stuck into something than buying brand new right now, so.
And you need some, you need something, too, so.
Yeah. One of your guys go get it, or is there?
Yeah, we could. It's, it's in Waukesha, it's not that far away.
Oh, I.
It, you know, it was from Missouri that I brought it up here, I'm sorry, I didn't think I didn't tell you that, but yeah, it's, it's not too far away. I could take our own, our own trucking trailer.
Sell the other tractor then?
I think, I'll talk to Amanda, the tractor's, it's an old tractor, we could probably sell, I don't know what we can keep it around for unless we were gonna, it can't pull our road grimmer, it really doesn't function now, we couldn't turn around and sell it.
It could always. Two wheel drive?
It's a two wheel drive, yep. The other thing I could do is, I guess I'm fortunate to run two counties, or unfortunate, everyone will get it, but we've got the same vintage in Worth County that, we're running those same tractors, and if it's something that we need a tractor for, maybe Worth County could purchase it from Mitchell County if they see the need to have a spare tractor set around, parts, you know, they're the old, I think they're old Ford's, big old flagger sticker on it, they were sold as a unit, so. I think it's worth the, I think it's worth the, the small risk to get it running.
There you go.
Less invested in it, so, if you guys would be able, I just wanted to kind of talk to you guys about it before, I think we're.
I think so.
So.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll just kind of push through then, so. So I've got for an update, I guess I think the biggest thing is, our biggest news is we'll have some, we're gonna use the, the mill and other spark pods, pots in the county too, not just the railroad tracks in Carpenter, we got some other bumps we want to mill down before, so.
You're welcome, really appreciate it.
Yeah, hope people go faster through Carpenter, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the engineer?
All right.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion and possible action on John and Moon Growth CLP application. Jenny?
Um, so we have the one new CLP application, they are looking to, well, they already have constructed a new garage, the estimated cost of the project was over $90,000, they're requesting $20,000, based on the scoring of the application, they scored 100 points, they met the goal of the program, they are using Mitchell County contractors, they're purchasing materials in Mitchell County, and then they have matching funds for a total of 100 points.
Did a home remodel and the new garage construction, CLP has to do with the garage.
Yep, just the garage, I didn't apply anything to the house towards this, because the house was already completed, and for the $20,000, they're eligible for that amount because their garage cost was over, over, it's over $100,000.
They're gonna make a motion for John and Moon Growth application? Nixon's made a motion.
I'll second that.
Mayor seconded. In for the discussion. Hearing done?
Roelton Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Aye. Question carries.
Thank you.
Good job. Discussion and possible action on Midwest Engineering Associates pay request. Midwest Engineering is the consultant that is overseeing the HVAC project at the, the jail. Uh, this, part of this bill is for the construction administration portion of the, the whole package that they're doing for us, so, it amounts to four thousand one hundred eighty-nine point four two dollars. Is your motion to approve Midwest Engineering Associates pay request? How moved to make that motion? Right, has made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have those seconds? May through the discussion? Hearing none?
Roque Hall, Mark?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Todd?
Question carries. IT update?
I have one question.
Okay.
Was, were you gonna talk more about this?
Yes, I was, thank you very much.
Was, is Sheriff still here on the phone, because he was a part of that, right?
Well, yeah, I don't know, it's HVAC update is coming up, so that's what I was gonna try to speak to.
Sure, I didn't see that.
But no, that's, that's what we had, so. Um, IT update, I put that on there, I'm just curious how many applications we've got, and kind of where we're at with all that, so.
We received one application.
Okay.
And did you put a deadline on the date, or date?
No, tell, position us, go.
Okay.
Good.
Are we able to see all that, or just the two of you? Applications, if they get applications, can we view it too, but you guys would be the ones doing the interviewing?
I don't think so.
I would like.
Can we get those distributed when they come through? You want it now? Is that, or no, just, okay, yeah. Email us if they get, uh, applications sent there.
If they come in paper, just scan it and email it to us, and we'll, okay.
That would be appreciated, thank you.
Anything else on IT update? I mean, they just was wondering about the applications, but.
Just a one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, HVAC update. Um, they're moving right along with, with it, as of, uh, meeting last Monday, so some of this is actually history, but at that time, uh, at the end of next week, which would be the end of this week, uh, we're gonna be starting up some of the air handlers, to actually get some of the things going. Uh, work we can do within the next two weeks, which should actually be the end of this week, uh, start the DOAS unit up, um, and complete some of the heat duct work, so, things are moving forward in that direction. Um, they did mention, in this mark, this would be you, when the project is completely done, they need to notify Heartland in regards to that, that's been, you know, an update there.
Yeah, we talked to them before when you started the project.
Okay. And they said that would be after it's all done, then we need to make sure that they know. So, possible change orders, and one of the, one of the issues that, that came up is in the control room, and they put two, uh, cassettes, not ceiling cassettes, but two cassettes is what they call it, and in the control room, there's a divider that separates, uh, dispatch and the for jailing part of it. And one, um, cassette feeds one side, the other cassette feeds the other side for air, and the design was set up for one thermostat to control the room, well, it's not actually happening correctly, because, um, some people like different temperatures, and when one side is happy, the control room is always hot, and, and so that always pretty much needs to be in a cooling type mode, the jailer's side, when, when that's happening, well, then they're cold over there. So, the change order was, well, and so they took a thermostat, and they were moving it around different parts of the room to see if they could get, get a, uh, happy, happy spot, and the thought is, is that it's actually best if we just split those two, two cassettes so that, and it's very, very possible that this would happen. So there'd be two thermostats, and one cassette would be feeding cool air to the, to the control room, the other cassette would be actually heating the, the jailer's side, so that's, so I told them, uh, it's called an ITC, instruction to contractor, so the contractor will, uh, figure out a price for that as far as to, to change that, and it's just gonna, up in the attic, I don't know what the unit exactly is called, but the, the unit is, that's up there is set up so that that can happen, so it's not gonna be a, a major reconfiguration of the whole project, they just need to pretty much take a couple lines and change them, and put in a couple thermostats, so, but we'll see what the price is, and then, um, down in the basement, when you go down into the basement, excuse me, the, uh, you get downstairs, and then you take a left, and you go into where all the utilities are, makes this system happen, underneath the steps, it's a lot of copper piping that ends up going making things work, and it's, it's a really dark zone now, before there was nothing there, so, and also when you come down the stairs, there's a, there's no lighting to come downstairs, so, uh, the second change order would be as far as to put a couple lights, one at the bottom of the stairs, and one just so that where all that piping is, because there are things that Dave's gonna probably need to be able to do there, so, you, you can see what's going on there, rather than walking around with flashlight under there. And then, the, the third one would be, uh, there are no exit lights down in the bo, in the bottom, so if something was to happen in the utility side of, of the boiler room area, uh, if power went out, or if there was some bad thing that happened in that room, uh, it takes twenty seconds for the generator to kick on, for lights to come back on, and if, for safety por, part of it, thought it would be best to have a couple of exit lights that would, would come on, so that if somebody's down there, because it's all dark, they'd see an exit light, they know how to get out of, out of there, go upstairs, so.
So they've never, they, they've never been there, right?
Never been there, no.
It's funny you, no, I asked, you know?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So those are, those are three, uh, change orders that, uh, will be, they haven't developed into change orders yet, the instruction to contractor for him to submit a price to us, so, that's something that's probably on the, on the, on our way. I think that's pretty much all I have on that, just wanted to give you guys an update. Any questions? Okay. All right. Items, no, meetings attended. I had nothing.
None?
Oh, I had substance abuse collision board meeting, and, uh, October twenty-third through the thirtieth was red, ribbon wheat, they're, had making presentations at Old Sage and Senansker Schools, and, uh, how a crime for life might be asking for more money, the father, oh, white money coming up, and Sarah Bordeaux County was there, they've been doing our tobacco grant, which is ten thousand dollars per year. So, that's from July first to June thirtieth is the tobacco grant year. And, so I don't know if that's gonna change, if we're gonna do it ourselves, or whatever, we'll probably help, that's what we're there. Then I had a juvenile detention center meeting, Eldora, and all the chief of police was there, they've had eighty-four, eighty-four calls this year so far, come there for riots, or, you know, fights, whatever, and the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention doesn't pay any property taxes, and Eldora is a real big town, so he's wondering about maybe being reimbursed for pepper spray and tasers, it's costing them money out of their budget, and to, so we're gonna discuss it at the next meeting to maybe reimburse for that kind of stuff, because they get a lot of calls, and then there's a training school there, too, in Eldora, and they get a lot of calls there, too, I guess. It's just, kids are out of control, I guess, whatever, but and the, the billing policy, we discussed that, and everybody was in favor except for one county to have all the bills from there go to the auditor's office, the one county wanted to go to the juvenile detention services, but then they get lost, and I asked Rachel before we ended, so. And then Bremer County is gonna be added to the membership for down there, too, because they're paying high prices for, you know, when you're not a member, and they're currently full, and but if, say we have somebody that needs to go there, they'll bump somebody out that's not a, not a member, and we'll have to find, and I guess all the detention centers in Iowa are full, and they're even sending something to Minnesota now, because it's kind of sad, but what a proud reality.
And yet for that, what a problem.
But there's, well, they hold fifty, and I thought they said like twenty-three or thirty-three are, are all felonies, so, you know, they're all going to prison.
And this is juvenile?
Yeah, this is juvenile, they're all going to prison when they turn eighteen, so they're just, they're holding cell, you know? Yeah. Here's, I think there's by first-degree murder, I believe, on the list, and, yeah, it's just, hmm. Yeah, it's amazing, but it's, it is what it is, but, and I guess that's it, that's all I had.
County social service meeting, and we had our annual HIPAA and security training, they have a good, uh, course on training for cybersecurity, and they're still looking for, uh, HR payroll and benefit specialists, so, if anybody wants to do one. That's it?
I had none.
Okay. Your management plan update?
Uh, one for Anderson, fifteen forty-four, Highway two eighteen, Senansker.
Open comments? Okay, I hear nothing. Meeting is adjourned.